Thank you, Ms. Santiago, could you call the row please?
Here.
Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Karen Sealer.
Julio Flores.
Here.
John C. Browdy.
Here.
I use the first.
Juan Hernandez.
Here.
Kimberly Oliver.
Here.
We have a forum. Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you so much. As Chairman of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order the April 17th, 2018 regular meeting to order. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board, the Superintendent, and I are pleased that you've joined us to celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to effective operation of the Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems for individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. They are the time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public; therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since this is legally mandated that these proceedings are accurately recorded, I may ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken the time to join us this evening. We are very proud of our school system, and we thank you for your interest in the Hartford Public Schools. And before I turn it over to Mr. Flores, again, I just simply just want to say thank you for taking an interest in Hartford Public Schools. Mr. Flores.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden esta reunión ordinaria de la junta del 17 de abril 2018. Damos una calidad bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y las superintendentes se complacen que se han unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información, y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria, y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos, y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la junta de audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación, y absténganse de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que negamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo estatal de para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar, y le damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Thank you so much. Give me a hand. Okay. So, we're going to do the public and student comments? Yep. So, we're supposed to read... Oh, there it is. Mister Hernandez. Y'all hit it on me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hello, everybody. We, as a Board, in collaboration with the Superintendent and district leadership, are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of HPS. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's Board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously, and to that end, we will have staff available for immediate follow-up if follow-up is required. After you have finished speaking, a staff member will come up to you, ready to take your information down. They will follow up with an update within 48 hours. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, Ms. Santiago will ring the bell, letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now, Mr. Julio Flores will read this in Spanish.
Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford, y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente, y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. Tenemos personal disponible para seguimiento inmediato para los casos que lo requieren. Una vez que usted haya terminado de hablar, un miembro del personal estará disponible para tomar su información. Esa persona investigará su caso y se comunicará con usted dentro de 48 horas. Les recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando hayan pasado dos minutos, la señorita Santiago sonará el timbre dejándole saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios.
Michael Downs.
Good evening.
Madam Superintendent. My name is Michael Downs. Live at 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford. First thing I want to do, address is the budget, money, anyway. Has to do with the rental or selling of the buildings that we abandoned or no longer use them as schools. We should be getting the top dollar for rentals, and if we're going to sell the buildings, they should be sold to tax-producing entities. With the city and the fiscal problems that they're in, we need as much money as we can get. The state's not helping us. Also, I notice that Hartford's still a fiscal agent for the Hartford Juvenile Detention. It's about time the state took over their own buildings, their own stuff. Why should we have to be the fiscal agent? And a conduit, if you will, for the money. And I also went by Weaver the other day, and they seem to be making pretty good progress. Looks like that Weaver Greene that I asked for the other month is working. At least they're doing more than just drinking coffee on that job. The e-funding for schools and libraries, that money would go a lot farther if some of these library branches moved into the schools. And I mean a lot more than just the three we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Farkason.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Haven't been here for a while. Board members, Superintendent, my name is Jason Farkason. Proud alumni from Weaver High School. I'm also the creator and project lead of Hartford Paint the City. I just want to start off and say thank you to all the Board members and all the individuals Hartford Public Schools who allowed me the opportunity to have wall space, schools, rec centers. Thank you, Kimberly, for that. Tiffany, Karen, and Craig, and Jose Colar Rivas. So far, we have... The goal is to get 14 murals completed, and we're on our way. We have three completed so far. The McKinley Shelter, Mensner Center, and Parker Memorial are three of the completed so far. So if you haven't gone there, I have tweeted. A lot of you individuals up there, hopefully you can get there. We have two in progress. The Adult Education Building, which is the mural is called Hartford Heroes. There's 22 portraits of our local heroes there that a lot of our students are not being taught about in our schools. So, the other one that's in progress, I started last weekend, is the Willie Ware Center, which is the oldest community center in the city of Hartford that survived the flood. You can also go to that rec center and see the flood line. We're going to have one started this weekend at Achievement First. And just to be clear, I go to every school, talk to every principal and staff, make sure that all the PTOs and the parents and everyone who I can get in contact with are comfortable with the opportunity. So thank you again for allowing us to have this art space. We have 14 murals in a really small city, so it's going to make a huge, big impact. And I said this the last time I was here, this is a really huge, global... This is a big deal. I know some people in Hartford, they won't get it now, but people outside of the state and this country are really emailing me, calling me, and trying to find a way how they can paint in this city. So thank you again. So, second note, just have a quick question. I know you guys can answer right now, but the Hartford School Building Committee, I went to a meeting a couple of days ago, which is very interesting. I really strongly believe that there needs to be a community voice on that panel there. I feel that there's a lot of individuals. I think a community voice and a student voice would be very impactful on that, and I think we need to start looking for some individuals who have strong impact in the community and give them a shot to make a strong impactful change. And I would like to know, how does the building community work in conjunction with the Board? And how does that communication look like? So, just in case if there's issue with construction in the school, if there's change orders or light items or special things, who makes that final say? Does the building committee report to the Board? Do they report to the Superintendent? Do they report to the Mayor? Or vice versa? How does that communication work? Because there's a lot of subcommittees on the Board of Education that I believe some of that information should be funneled to and funneled through to the committee. So any help you all can give me and individuals in the community on how that transparency works, that'd be great. And again, thank you so much for providing the wall space, and Hartford is... My project allows us to get out of the shadow of potential. We have actual things we can achieve. So hopefully, when there's some additional magic funds for some art programs and some graphic programs in our schools, we find a way to get some strong partners like Jerry's Artorama and other art stores across the state that can help out and fund some of these materials. Thank you.
Soy Aracelis Silva.
I will be translating for Ms. Silva.
Okay, gracias. Yo tengo una pregunta. Yo trabajo para usted, para el Board, y yo quiero saber quiénes son los que disciplinan para profesionales? El Board, administration, administración, o para otras paraprofesionales? Esa es mi pregunta.
I work for the Board, and I have a question. I'd like to know who is responsible for discipline of paraprofessionals? Is it the Board? Is it administration? Or is it someone else? That is my simple question.
I understood that.
Nosotros no podemos responder a preguntas ahora, pero habrá un miembro del personal que habla como usted.
Okay, muchas gracias.
We cannot answer questions directly, but a member of the staff will speak with Ms. Silva.
Okay, no hay problema. Gracias.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you so much. All right. So we're going to move on to item number five with your reports, and I have been trying to shorten my report as public comments were going on. So, the report of the Chair. The Superintendent, the Chair, and Vice Chair, we went to the state Capitol to testify against Senate Bill 526, which is a bill that is proposing to protect Batch Elder School from closure and co-locate Montessori there, and we testified, and I'll just go into what I said. I paraphrase it. My testimony was about the overreach of the Senate Bill and the fact that the General Assembly gives local control to the Hartford Board of Education. Therefore, we have jurisdiction over the schools and the city limits of Hartford, and this bill subverts our authority to govern the schools, and it subverts the superintendent's authority to implement the Board's vision and to act as an agent on behalf of the Board. So, that was a bill that we feel is detrimental to the future of our district, and we testified against that. As a result of that, we've gotten some community support. So we have the Ministerial Alliance, who held the press conference yesterday in opposition of the Senate Bill, in support of all of our children, the 21,000 children in this city, and coming together to create a quality school system for every student in the city, not simply just one particular neighborhood or one faction of the city. So my deepest thanks goes out to the Ministerial Alliance for supporting the district model of excellence, because there was a lot of hard work that went into that, and we appreciate that. And hopefully, what we can do is build momentum, because what this is, is building community. So even though we have a lot of contention with this, if we can turn these lemons into lemonade and be positive and learn how to work together, grow together, I think that we can still have a... Find a successful resolution to this. So I just want to say thank you to the Ministers. We had a community member talk about the Hartford School Building Committee. We had a meeting the other day. There was a Chair appointed. We were not able to vote on any items, because there was a motion to redo the vote for Chair. So there's an emergency meeting being held tomorrow, I think 1:00, at the library, if I'm not mistaken. And so there may be a new Chair elected. There may not be, I don't know. And I will get that information on the appointments and how that building committee works. And I am taking that as a potential. I'm volunteering myself to be on the building committee, so you might end up doing that. So I'm just going to move on, and we... There was a presentation by Sound Control about school safety that was given to the Education Committee at City Hall that I attended. Mr. Douglas Curtis, the President and CEO of Sound Control, did a Hartford, Connecticut active shooter exercise, and I am officially handing that information over to the Superintendent as we speak right now. So I did that on record. And there was a mutual link representative, and what this is, is this is a alarm system that ties into Sound Control already, and if there's an active shooting or issue at a school with this mutual link, they will be able to tap in directly into the cameras in the school and monitor the hallways, find the perpetrator, locate victims, so forth and so on. It's about... There's a security grant of $10 million at the state that the city's going to apply for, but the city has to contribute $1 million into that. And so I don't want to get your hopes up high about, you know, the city contracting this, but I just wanted to report on it. I personally, and I know I shouldn't editorialize, but if we're being flat-funded, I don't think the city should have $1 million to pay for this before they flat-fund our children. And then the last thing I'll comment on is the city had a resolution to ban all contact sports. And so again, we had a school that went to City Hall and testified in opposition of that proposal. The proposal was defeated and never got out of committee, so that proposal, that resolution will never reach the full council. And that is my Chairman's report. Madam Superintendent.
Good evenings, members of the Board and community. It's good to see all of you here today. I actually would like to start thanking Principal Monica Quiñones for her leadership and for hosting us this evening. So I have several updates for you. I'm going to just give initially an update as to the district model of excellence and all of the work that's been going on as we transition on some of our schools. So the excellent work of the school design teams is underway. We are on target with our transitions that are scheduled for the end of this year. Family information sessions, you know, have been held at Martin Luther King, Simpson Waverly, Batch Elder, and over 132 parents have attended. We have completed 13 open houses at Montessori, Wish, Sanchez, McDonough, Rossin Elams, Rossin MLK, specifically for middle school families at the Rossin and MLK sites. The family information nights in the open houses have taken place for those schools that are changing, you know, this year into next year. And we're in the process of polling our families in transition so that we can confirm all student placements in the receiving schools for next year. Also, we're working to manage the sibling preferences that are going to also be accommodated. The Office of School Choice is going to soon release an update, a report, on the status of student placement so that we can begin to work to ensure that all schools are resourced and staffed appropriately, given that we're doing this work right alongside our budget process. We also want to make sure that we can get our students to reunite with the teachers that they love and know so well. So we will soon announce also any fun and informational events for our families and the students so that we can continue to welcome them to the new schools and have them feel part of the community. Design team meetings with central office staff and our consultants at Education Resource Strategies are also happening. So these school design teams are led by the principals, teacher teams, and they're meeting to create what we call the theory of action, right? Is what it is that they are aiming for, their belief system around the theme of the school, the instructional model, and identifying collaborative planning time, right? That's one of the things that we identified from the community and speaking with our staff about the need for collaborative time so that our adults can learn from and with one another. School teams are looking at ways to maximize the time, the collaboration. Mock schedules are being examined to see how, you know, we can begin drafting the schedules between the two leadership teams. So on behalf of the entire community, I just want to thank these schools for doing the diligent work around the transition. My next update is around the Office of the Child Advocate Action Plan and the Independent Monitors. The Independent Monitors will be here tomorrow and Thursday. The Independent Monitors have released their second report, and they will be here with us to not only review the findings of the second report, but also their recommendations. And I just want to highlight the key findings of the initial report and the recommendations. So some of the findings that they identified was include that we did have the action plan that was accepted by the Board, that the action plan did address all of the elements in the report. However, one of the recommendations made was around making sure that we have the capacity in our district to actually implement the plan. There was also a finding around using our data and tracking the progress so that we can be able to identify whether or not we're seeing what we're calling the culture change in our district. With regard to the report that they're going to be discussing tomorrow and Thursday when they're here, some of the findings include that we at Hartford Public Schools have largely addressed the core issues of the report, and that we still have over-reporting happening to DCF, and so we have to find a way to continue to build capacity in our staff. There is a finding around compliance, that we have been addressing compliance, but now we have to look at addressing how we improve the culture throughout the district, which is the work that takes longer and the work that's hardest to do. And that special education services still need to be examined and continue to improve. So they will be here, like I said, tomorrow, working with our senior leaders, and then on Thursday, they will be meeting with some of our Board members to review other report findings. I have several recognitions that I'd like to highlight. Classical Magnet and Ranzilli Academy students advanced to the State National History Day competition. We are proud of our regional winners of the competition, which was held on April 7th. The students completed research-based projects that were built around the theme of the National History Day project, which was conflict and compromise in history. We had 10 students from the schools, and they are now going to be moving on to the next level of the competition. I want to also congratulate Mr. Dave Mangus from the Green Technology Academy at Hartford Public High School for his work with students in creating portable and wind and solar panels for Nepal and now also for Puerto Rico. And so, not only are our students taking great leadership and innovation, but of course, Mr. Mangus earned an award of excellence as one of the top 25 newsmakers of the 2018 Engineering News Record Award. And so that award celebrates excellence in construction and the building industry. Another celebration for a teacher, science teacher, Dr. Ornstein, a classical magnet, is receiving the Connecticut Science Educator Fellow Award this spring. This is the most prestigious award for science teachers in this state, and so we want to congratulate him, and there will be a recognition ceremony on May 2nd. So if you happen to come across Classical and/or Dr. Ornstein, give him a shout-out. Two more recognitions. At the Hartford Youth STEM Awards Camp Ceremony on Friday, April 6th, at Turundi College, we had four of our students that won a one-week STEM camp at the Connecticut Science Center this summer. The four students submitted drawings and essays answering several questions about biology and science, and they were given four awards. So we want to congratulate our four students as well. Lastly, last week was National Assistant Principal Week, and we want to acknowledge our assistant principals. The National Association of Elementary School Principals and the National Federation of School Administrators have declared last week National Assistant Principals Week. So we want to also acknowledge our leaders. Lastly, and of high importance, and I ask that you, you know, you have celebratory patience for me as I review the next two items on my report, because I want to acknowledge our Para Educators of the Year, and I also want to acknowledge our Teachers of the Year. I know this is not something that we regularly do, but, right, we're doing things a little different, and we want to highlight... We want to highlight our staff. And so I ask that you bear with me. I'll begin with our Para Educators of the Year. You know that Para Educators are integral to the education process. They not only provide safety and healthy learning environments for our students, but they work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And so they're active and effective participants of the educational process, and I wanted to acknowledge our Para Educators of the Year. So I am going to name all of our Para Educators of the Year. And of course, and of course, we will have the Para Educator of the Year later on, so bear with me. Marisol Rodriguez, Byron Dean, Abigail Delaire, Jill Carvalho, Ivan Hernandez, Elizabeth Sanabria, Lindita Vasili, Elida Lekmane, Kathleen Snow, Angela Edwards, Tanya Alexseco, Ebony Allen, Carolyn Neal, Abelardo Escalante, Luz Rodriguez, James Bachand, Emily Ramirez, Barbara Thomas, Shakia Chapman, Kim Reed, Carlos Velazquez, Michelle Scott Clu, Sasha Walton, Ronald Pandari, Duane Roberts, Myra Álvarez, and Kimberly Foster Williams. So congratulations to our Para Educators of the Year. Now, moving on to congratulate our Teachers of the Year, and you know that teacher quality is widely, widely acknowledged in the research as one of the most important... of the most important factors in student learning and achievement. Teachers mold our students and guide them throughout the educational process. They spend countless hours preparing their lessons, evaluating progress of our students, counseling our students, coaching our students, connecting them to the purpose of their learning. And so I want to acknowledge all teachers and the 2018 Teachers of the Year and give them thanks for their hard work. Letters, by the way, will be sent home personally thanking our teachers and our Paraeducators for their commitment to students in Hartford. So I will also review the nominees for our Teacher of the Year. Katie Mangifico, Crystal Marshall Dakers, Stacy Shanay, Ryan Sprague, Lisa Peruki, Caitlin Sullivan, Heather Vega, Beverly Kislane, Emily Burkanti, Amy Couch, Heather Kahn, Tamara Williams, Charles Butter, Ann Leonard Blake, Krista Chambers, Lori McCants, Abigail Perez, Bridget Allison, Philip Mitchell, Tiffany Blanchett, Danielle Barnbaum, Elizabeth Tanuski, Amanda Struble, Joshua Swaby, Christopher Redden, Sanchari Blair, Joseph Fuller, Celine Hines, Chelsea Usher, Cara Ledger, Kian Rutter, Megan Diasano, Eric McKay, Benjamin Carlson, Christine Downs, Matthew Shea, Chelsea Sermona, Aniwa Donker, and Regina Julie Alby. So congratulations to our Teachers of the Year. That concludes my report.
I had the mic so far away. Thank you so much. All right, so we'll get into committee reports, finance audit committee. I will confess, I was at the State Capitol testifying, so I do not have a committee report. However, did the committee members want to say anything since I wasn't there? Go ahead, say something, Kim.
Hi, so not as prepared as I probably should be. Yes, we did have our meeting. What we did was we actually reviewed a couple of potential contracts and with the staff. Some of those are on the actual agenda tonight. And we also talked about the fact that we will have a finance retreat coming soon. And I think pretty much that was it for our meeting, unless anyone else has anything else to add.
And that concludes the finance report. So next up is Family Community Engagement. Mr. Flores?
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. The Family and Community Engagement Committee had not met for several months because of several snowstorms. We did meet this month at the Burns Latino Studies Academy. We met with their SGC and other community members. We had intended initially to meet with at least three SGCs during the course of the year, and said the meetings had been canceled because of the weather. But our intent in going to the schools was to learn about our SGCs, the issues that they may be facing, and what can be done from a board and central staff perspective to support those functions. So I thought it was a very informative meeting for us. Mr. Victor Crutofaro, who's the principal at Burns Latino Studies Academy and our host for the evening, started us off with a PowerPoint presentation about the achievements of their SGC over the course of the year. They feel generally that they are in a much better place this year than they were last year. They reviewed their school improvement plan, they did a change in uniforms, they've had toy drive, they are having regular meetings, and so far have had five this year. So in general, they are working efficiently. The rest of the meeting was dedicated to a conversation on general issues that are faced by not just the SGCs but also the PTOs. And we came back with what I think of as a to-do list. We don't have currently a chief outreach officer. That is a function that we are interviewing for, and we hope to make a decision soon. But certainly, when that person arrives, he or she will have a long list of things before them. Among the things that we talked about was training for the SGCs, and there were recommendations or suggestions as to the possibility of having regional trainings rather than try to get everyone together at one point. We talked about the possibility of developing webinars and other resources that they can use in-house for those people who are not able to attend trainings. And we recognize that our SGC members are all volunteers and people who have families and careers, so it is sometimes difficult for them. We talked about different methods of communication and trying to streamline communications, and also trying to find ways to support the schools in developing more efficient websites where they can publish things like meeting schedules and minutes and so forth. We talked about getting some more clarity on certain policy issues that keep coming up, and it's something that we've been talking about for a long time. I know that our policy committee is really overbooked at this point, but we have a few items on the list. And issues came up also around ways to support non-documented families. It appears that some people are reluctant to come forth and offer their services because they have fears over their documentation, and we've made it clear that schools do not keep track of people's legal status. We are not allowed legally to ask people about it, and that the schools are a safe place, but we need to find ways to make sure that all families understand this. And I think that about wraps it up for our to-do list, and that ends my report.
Thank you so much, Mr. Flores. Moving on to the Policy Committee, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is my mic on? Hello, hello? Awesome. When you come late, they cut you short. So the Policy Committee met on April 5th. We had a pretty rigorous agenda, but there were a few items on the agenda that we really want to spend some additional time on, so we got to about two out of the five things that we had on our list. We opened up with a report from Peter Dart, the Assistant Superintendent of Talent Management. I really also want to, like, give Peter some props here because per the recommendations in response to the OCA report, we're supposed to have this quarterly report on the Central Harassment Prevention Team, but Peter has come to our meetings almost monthly, and he really has become a staple at the Policy Committee. We're pretty much trying to, like, adopt and recruit him. The work that he's been doing with the Central Harassment Prevention Team has been really awesome. Initially, when we started this work, looking into the quarterly reports, it was kind of difficult for us to understand. But, you know, with Peter's guidance, we've been able to come up with, like, a more, a clearer reporting structure, really to understand, like, the function of the Central Harassment Prevention Team, to really understand, like, what constitutes a case for harassment, and to really think more, more in-depth about policy around that. Peter also came with some recommendations around policy to the last committee meeting, and he has recommended that we take a look at the function of the school site harassment prevention team. As Mr. Flores said, the Policy Committee is booked and busy, but once we're able to kind of clear off some of this, the initial work that we have right now on our plate around safety policies, we'll definitely be able to take that up and continue conversations around that. We also spent a great deal of our meeting talking about the district model for excellence and policy around that. I don't, maybe many of you have heard about some of the community concerns around our adherence to policy around school closure consolidation, really, all that stuff. I feel really confident about the work that we've done. We crosswalked the policies prior to our vote in January, and I can stand by any of the work that we've done. If anyone has any particular questions around the policy, feel free to contact me. I'm the Chair of the Policy Committee. That's Karen, K-A-R-E-N dot Taylor, T-A-Y-L-O-R, at trincoll, T-R-I-N-C-O-L-L dot E-D-U. I'm happy to meet with anyone to really comb through the policy and discuss it. We talked about it in-depth in our committee meeting because I think it's a critical point for us to be able to communicate to our community members at this point that the process that we went through was rigorous, it was thoughtful, and we adhered closely to the policy, and we created many opportunities for engagement for community members. And so I wanted to make sure that my committee members really understood that, and I'm happy to talk in detail with any community members or groups about the policy around that. I've also been contacted by HPU, Hartford Parent University, and they're interested in having, kind of like, a voice at the table. I did let them know that Policy Committee, we have a really rigorous agenda, and I have to say that I'm not particularly proud of the things that we've been able to pass, but I am incredibly proud of the work that we've done around engaging thoughtfully around policies and how it's going to impact our students and our families and our workers. So Policy Committee meetings are open to the public, and I'm going to be in conversation with HPU about ways in which they can have a voice around the table around policies that specifically impact parents. And that's something that's going to be an ongoing discussion. Also, I'm like, am I allowed to say this? Okay, good. I wanted to give a sincere and heartfelt thank you to Michelle Pulick, who has left the district. She's done incredible work as our Policy Committee Liaison, taking up, passing the baton to Dr. Vasquez Matos, who will be working as a liaison for Policy Committee. I was going to say in Michelle's absence, but that, like, sounds like you're like a fill-in, right? Like, you're like the guy now, so... Will be working with Policy Committee as the liaison there. And so, Dr. Vasquez Matos, we have lots of conversations to have. I actually have a full list already of policies I'd like to have passed within the next few months, some of them being policies around harassment for both personnel and for students, and also abuse and neglect, critical policies that we need to have, you know, solid language and regulations around moving forward. And that concludes our Policy Committee report.
Thank you so much. I'll lead my editorial to the end. So we're going to get on to school choice and facilities. Mrs. Lambert?
Thank you. The School Choice and Facilities Committee met on April 5th. We also had a robust agenda and tried to get through almost to the end of it. We spent a significant amount of time on the first item, which was the choice update, which is a standing item of our committee. But as you probably have been able to tell from some of my recent reports, we've been really delving deep on this item and on different topics. And so we had a choice update this meeting that really went into elaborating and explaining from our choice staff how we are placing students into our magnet schools, how we're declaring seats in our magnet schools, and then, you know, filling them through the RESCO process. And, you know, this was something that we put on the agenda because, you know, there's been obviously questions concerned around our magnet schools having empty seats. We saw, you know, we had a board workshop where we also had some questions around why some of our magnet schools are not 50% Hartford and 50% suburban students, why we have such fluctuations in the amount, the percentages of suburban versus Hartford students. And then, you know, and given the district model of excellence, sort of how does it fit into the district model of excellence to have magnet schools that aren't operating at full capacity and why that is? And so this was the information, and if you'll bear with me, that we received from the choice staff on the seat declaration process. And I'm just going to walk through it. It's in our board report, but I'm going to walk through it and editorialize a little bit with some of the additional things that we learned as we went through this in committee. So the HPS RESCO Office, our choice staff, in compliance with the state's, the stipulation of Shep versus O'Neil, and the State Department of Education RESCO Office provides the State Department of Education with seat declarations, they're called, for the RESCO lottery with the purpose of filling our magnet schools equitably and to the best of our ability. So we learned that some of the steps in this process, it starts out with the review of the current, for each school, would review the current, school by school and grade by grade enrollments for each school. And then also the roll-up of grade level enrollments to the new school year, so like returning students and graduating students. Reviewing the suburban cap numbers for each school and comparing to what our HPS Finance Office has budgeted for suburban numbers of students per school. So as we all know, we get approximately $13,000 per suburban student that we enroll in our schools, and the state has a cap on the total number of suburban students that we are able to enroll, which translates to our magnet operating grant, the total number. And so there are caps for each school as well. And then reviewing the HPS Finance budgeted numbers for the Hartford resident students per school, and we, those are our own dollars. We don't get additional funding for Hartford students that go to magnet schools. Reviewing the attrition history of each school, which was interesting, and we, and if anybody wants to see this, we did review some initial attrition numbers, and there's actually, there's been quite a bit of attrition at a number of our schools since October 31st, I guess, yeah, since, no, October 1 of last year, which is when the lottery closes, which is when the placement process closes. We've actually had some attrition. So there's a couple of schools. Breakthrough, I think, was one that I, that was noted in the committee that ended the school year as being compliant schools with their reduced isolation percentage being around 27%, and then is out of compliance as of right now, as of we're doing seat declarations. And that has to do with, you know, students having left in ratio that would, I guess, make the reduced isolation numbers go down. So they review the attrition history for each school. And then the individual principals would analyze the application pool to make sure that there are enough students to fill the schools at the appropriate grade levels and also to maintain reduced isolation compliance. And so we learned that the principals receive, once the lottery has closed, they receive a numbers, they receive their applicant pool, their total applicant pool, and the racial composition of their applicant pool, although they don't receive the actual, like, names of the students or the order of the students. But they would go through and make their seat declarations look, using that applicant pool in conjunction with the other information here, like the grade, the number of attrition and the seats that are available and the caps and the finance recommendations. So they would, and then they... Sorry, then, I'm sorry, then the principals submit the desired grade-by-grade Hartford and suburban seat declaration numbers to be reviewed by our HPS RESCO Office. And our HPS RESCO Office would then provide feedback to the principals about where adjustments should be made to fill cap numbers, budgeted numbers, and they would recommend potentially overfilling in some areas to account for attrition, to make sure to keep the proper reduced isolation balance per projections from the applicant pools. And then, and it was clarified that, so in our RESCO Office, their, the HPS RESCO Office staff would be looking at the state simulations that would be being run during this time. I think, you know, last year it was 13. The state is running lots of simulations of the lottery to look at the actual order and to kind of help the principals determine where they can pull more students or not based on the compliance in each of those grades. So that might be why you would, we see in some instances, like, so many suburban students more than Hartford students because they're looking at these, you know, compliance issues. And as I mentioned, so we, the, our RESCO Office, HPS RESCO Office staff would review simulations conducted by the State Department of Education RESCO Office and determine whether the estimations and projections of the fill for each grade and school are seating correctly. This helps when all RESCO partners, including Cracker, Goodwin, East Hartford, and Bloomfield have submitted their seat declarations, and we can pull from all the same pools of students. The, our staff, our choice staff and the principals would ensure siblings, staff, and pathway preferences are being seeded to the best of capacity in each grade and school, then make adjustments if the schools are not reaching the proper reduced isolation balance. They would make adjustments to the seat declarations that they're declaring for any given grade. Or if they're not able to accommodate enough preference students... or if they're not able to accommodate enough preference students or if more students than expected are being pulled to other partner magnets in the simulations. And then they provide feedback. We, our choice staff provides feedback to the resco, State Department of Education choice staff about any errors in the lottery placements. And then when all of the test simulations are final, SDE resco pushes the button. They run the final lottery. And before they do that, the seat declaration and placements are reviewed by their, the SDE attorneys. And the final approvals or denials in some cases with some of our highly non-compliant schools are ultimately made by the state. So, I had asked some questions clarifying that, you know, who is the final say in whether we can declare a seat or, once the lottery is run, then there would also be a process for pulling more students from the waitlist similarly to this. And the way that we understood that from our choice staff at this meeting was that it needs to the state makes that ultimate determination. So, takeaway around some of the issues with our empty seats and our magnet schools not taking as many Hartford students in many instances from, for me and we discussed this summit committee was, you know, we heard from our staff about, you know, how this, the issue of having our seats not be able to be filled because of compliance is, I think the word was actually crippling the system, you know, with this empty seat issue. And, you know, and obviously from an equity standpoint, like not having our Hartford students being 50-50 in these schools, right? And so, one of the other questions that I asked that we'll be getting hopefully more information on to understand was, is actually, you know, when it comes to these empty seats, are we talking about class, like what is an empty seat? Is it this classroom has, there's, you know, two teachers in this grade and the classroom has X capacity with these two teachers? Is it 18 kids? Is it 20 kids? Like, you know, because you see sort of like different numbers in different schools based on, it's unclear what, so, you know, trying to kind of really understand better how we're determining like what the seat capacity is for these schools. So, hopefully we'll receive some more information on that. And that was our choice update. And so, we, and as you can tell from my report, it was a long portion of our agenda. So, then we moved on to the construction planning process protocol checklist and this was something that, from an operational effectiveness standpoint, one of our priorities was very positive to have a real process in place now that is very clear around the construction planning process vis-à-vis our committee of the board, facilities and choice committee, and then the application process for the grant applications to the state to receive construction grant funding. And then how that works in conjunction with the building committee's responsibilities and processes. So, that was very helpful and we have that all sort of laid out now in a nice flow chart with timelines. So, that's something that was positive to talk about that we, I think, really supports one of our strategic priorities around operational effectiveness. We also briefly discussed the educational specifications for Buckley and for Burns. Those are going to be, as we all know, from the district model of excellence, Buckley is going to be where central office is located ultimately in the final plan. And so, that construction will, the specs for that will account for our central office and also renovating Buckley High School as part of that. So, the specs for that and also for Burns Latino Studies, which will be co-locating the pre-K magnet per the district model of excellence, are going to be coming down the pike for approval at the next board meeting. As of right now, they're slated so that we can make sure that those projects are, that we've spoken about the educational specifications for those projects and what we as a district need for those schools so that the proper applications can be submitted to the state so that we can actually get the funding in for those construction projects. And then, we lastly discussed the, it's on our agenda today around the Weaver Phase Three, the demolition for the fieldhouse, which I'll speak to it when we have it on the agenda today, but we did review that in committee and that's why it was forwarded to the agenda today. And that concludes my choice update, facilities update.
Thank you so much, Ms. Glanville. And we have Teaching and Learning Committee, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you. I'll try to be quick. So, as the superintendent mentioned earlier, with the OCA report and our partners at over at four-point, special education is very important. So, part of our agenda actually for our April 10th meeting, we only had one item on there and that was the continuum of SPED service delivery, which we're going to have as a standing item at every, on every agenda going forward. So, we met on April 10th, as I mentioned. We were lucky enough after, after only giving her 10 minutes at the meeting before, we gave Dr. Sellers, who's the executive director of Student Support Services, a good amount, about an hour to cover probably what will take a couple of years to cover, to be completely honest. But we had a very, very good conversation, which was actually led through a presentation by Dr. Sellers, a PowerPoint presentation. If anybody wants to see the PowerPoint, I don't have it on me, but I have it in my computer. I can send it out via email. Just come see me after the meeting. Okay. So, I'll just give you a few highlights from the presentation and then we'll, and then I'll turn it right back over to the chairman. So, we started off the conversation with a couple of essential questions. So, first is how can we plan and deliver instruction that is flexible and supportive of all students while also that minimizes barriers to learning and maximizes levels of challenge and support for all learners, including our students who are profoundly gifted and those with significant cognitive disabilities? We also thought about the question of, as an educational system, how do we respond to the variability in the students that we teach? So, Dr. Sellers, what we know as SRBI or in the presentation, she had multi-tiered systems of support, so MTSS. So, we talked a little bit about that. She gave us the beautiful images and a very solid presentation on it. It's a problem-solving model that we use as a district for identifying specific curricular and instructional deficits and strengths in order to develop appropriate educational supports interventions and for all students and provide early support for students who vary in their readiness for learning in their responsiveness to instruction. So, very, very heavy, but we moved on and there were questions by board members throughout, so I'll get to those in a second. But we focused on how MTSS helps us identify specific curricular and instructional deficits. We wanted to, we had a discussion on the fact that when it comes to SPED, there is a very clear over-representation of male and students, male and students of color in Hartford. Dr. Sellers informed us that there is a team in place, that once there is a referral for special education services, there is a period of about six to eight weeks where the team looks to see if the student had access to tier-one learning to begin with, looks at the data, what the adults have done to support the student, the intensity, frequency and duration, very, very important, those three tools right there. So, intensity, frequency and duration, and it includes a cognitive evaluation as a part of that six-to-eight week process. We, unfortunately, we talked a little bit about the fact that the theory, what we're trying to practice in some cases is so far from reality, right? Mr. Flores brought this up, that there are so many of our children who are dealing with trauma and emotional issues, not necessarily always cognitive. So, we have to make sure that we're evaluating how we're helping those students as well. Ms. Oliver also added that parents sometimes may be offended when asked for permission to do a psyche vow on their child, right? I mean, naturally something, when you're thinking of your child and somebody asks to perform a psyche vow can be a bit jarring. So, we talked a little bit about, and I know that this is part of Dr. Sellers' work and but the district as a whole is, how do we remove that stereotype that receiving a psyche vow is saying that your child is less than somebody else's child, right? Almost done, I promise. So, we focus on the fact that this is very important for the DME. Part of what I've been trying to do as the chair of the Teaching and Learning Committee is trying to see where our, certain departments need a little bit more help and when I say help, I also mean financially, right? So, I've mentioned to my board colleagues and to the superintendent and some folks have heard me say that I'm not afraid to challenge when I feel like we need a little bit more money on this side, right? So, for examples, we, for example, we stated, Dr. Sellers stated that we would like to have, as a district, more psychologists and social workers at every school to be part of the full-time team and not point four here or point six here or point five here because that means that we're also stretching these people thin, right? And not only are we stretching them too thin, they're also not able to be a full member of that community if they're having to be somewhere else at the same time. So, how are we expecting them to have solid, strong partnerships with these students, parents, teachers, paraprofessionals, et cetera? But we're expecting so much of them and that's not a criticism of us or the district as a whole. To be completely honest, it's part of our fiscal situation, but we have to make sure that we prioritize as a district to make sure that we have these folks in place. We talked a little bit about, Ms. Brody brought up the concern around PPT meetings, making sure that people, staff members at the school actually come prepared for PPT meetings and making sure that, that there is an agenda that they stick to and that the meeting doesn't happen just to happen. But with this being such a huge topic and such a huge topic in relation to our DME, we will continue to have SPED service delivery on the agenda going forward. Our next meeting is May 10th, 9:00 a.m. We've given every meeting an hour and a half, so 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 at the very least. I know sometimes other things are happening. The agenda is to be determined, but again, if you're interested in anything having to do with SPED, it will be on the next agenda as, and I believe Dr. Sellers will be there. So, I think that's my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Let me just add, and I'm not trying to make more work for you, but there are from some educators from other districts who would love to sit down with you in your committee. So, if we could possibly do something in the evening in sort of like a workshop or something like that so we can have a general discussion, because I know a lot of people find what you're doing is fascinating and I do too and very proud of that committee. I want to, let me just say this. Ms. Taylor was very modest, so I'll be bold and say that I'm extremely proud of the Policy Committee and the work that they've done. I'm very happy that they have dedicated themselves to really making sure that we have thoughtful policy, but we have a thoughtful process and that we're looking at every aspect, not just the student-teacher relationship with parents and how it's going to affect administrators, how policy will affect the entire community. And so, when it comes to the district model of excellence and the work that they did, not only do I stand by the work that they've done, but I am a proud advocate of the work that they've done. They dotted their i's twice, they crossed their t's twice, and I am, I will stand in front of the state board or any other board if challenged on the DME with this policy and I will stand there proud and answer any question. So, I just want to say thank you, Ms. Taylor, for the work, Mrs. Glanville and the entire board. It is an honor to serve with you guys and it's, it was a privilege to work on that DME with you and to deliver on the promise that we are going to be efficient and that we're going to contribute to the long-term sustainability of the city. So, yes, thank you for that. With that said, we did respond to the complaint from the parents and so that response is with the state now, so I'm not going to speak on that. And we also, with the help of our attorney Julie Wilde and Howard Rifkin, I didn't know who was here, we responded to the federal complaint. And so, I just want to say thank you to Attorney Wilde and Howard Rifkin. As many of you know, I'm a piece of work and it took about two days to get this done because I gave them a truly hard time, but they were patient with me and we worked it out so that we are going to put ourselves in the best position to represent the Hartford Public Schools and make sure that we're doing the right thing by our children. So, I just want to say that and we're going to, oh, and we do, we do not have a student report tonight because our student board member is not here. So, we're going to move directly into the business agenda. So, we're going to go to item A, number one. I was just about to turn the page and it's funny. So, we are, item one, the acceptance of funds for Hartford Juvenile Detention Center is So, I'll read my description of the bill and then I'll let the superintendent explain. The Hartford Board of Education authorized the superintendent to accept funds in the pass-through, pass-through dollars as the fiscal agent for the program at the Hartford Juvenile Detention Center in the amount of $50,541 from the state, Connecticut State Department of Education. Madam Superintendent?
Just a little background on the agenda item. Part D of Title I funds have been received for over 10 years to assist in the provision of services and to update resources at the Juvenile Detention Center in Hartford. So, the funds provide compensation for outside presenters around topics including career opportunities, interview skills and have also assisted in the operating budget to ensure that there's follow-up with sending districts to make sure that students have returned or connected back to their school and their communities once they go back home. Dollars will also, have also assisted with technology upgrades and improvements for students to use for their educational attainment at the Juvenile Detention Center. So, just a little background.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right. So, having read the description, are there any debates or questions? If not, is there a motion to take this up? Is there a motion? Has it been moved? Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been moved and second and all in favor of adopting the item number one. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? Motion carries. And item number two, the approval of school construction plans and EDO 42, submit to Weaver High School Phase Three. The State Department of Administrative Services Office of School Construction requires that the school building committee and boards of education certify that they have approved the final construction documents for school construction prior to the OSGC review of the plans. Once the plans are reviewed and approved by the OSCG, the projects are allowed to go out to bid. Madam Superintendent?
The only point of reference is that the cost estimate has been prepared and the scope is within the budget. The project schedule calls for this work to be bid and implemented in the summer of this year in order to allow for the renovations to keep, to continue. Renovations are still scheduled to be completed by December 2019.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. So, the Hartford Board of Education approves the final plans and authorizes architects to submit documents for construction phase of work for the above-referenced school project. The Office of School Construction grants for their review and approval is their motion to adopt this item.
Still moved.
It's been moved there, second?
Second.
It's been moved in second and all in favor of adopting this item? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? Oh, you know what? Forgive me before I even bane the gavel. Is there any questions or debate on this? Forgive me. Yeah. Is there any question to debate? Because I have a lot, but I'll go last. Any?
So, I'll speak to it.
Madam Glanville?
May I speak to it first?
Yes.
This was, you know, before our committee. So, I, the main question that we asked in committee, which is, speaks to our role as the board, which is to adopt educational specifications that guide this process, given that we are the educational institution, how these construction projects serve those interests, was just whether this was, you know, had any impact on, as you all know, we all voted on educational specifications for the fieldhouse and we adopted those not in alternate, we adopted them in full. And my question at the committee was, will this be per those education specifications that we adopted? And the answer that we received and understood was that, of course, because in order to actually build it, we have to demo it and this is about, you know, demoing the existing structures that need to be demoed. So, that, I just wanted to share that from our committee that speaks to this. I actually also have a question because it says in the I, I actually also have a question because it says in the resolution that the, um, the Hartford School Building Committee has reviewed and approved the construction packages, and I do believe that we did have that, but I don't, I don't know if you can speak to that, Dr. Colon-Rivas, because it's, it's written, it's written this way in the resolution. So I know that, I don't know that that has to come first, so, but it's written as though it's come first, so can we?
So let's, let's clarify that. Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Stallings and board members, superintendent. So there's no state statute that says that one area have to come in before the Board of Education. It just happened that yesterday, the School Building Committee meeting was canceled. So the, this portion was part of the agenda item, and it was not, because the meeting was canceled, it was not presented. However, previews to the Hartford Board Building Committee, we had the opportunity to bring this agenda item to the School Choice and Facilities Committee in which Sal Salafia presented the item. So at least we had the opportunity and a portion of board members had the opportunity to actually listen to what this process, the EDO 42, is about. So I think that, having said that, it was then voted yesterday at the School Building Committee. We're asking for the Hartford Board of Education to vote on this. What this does is it gives permission to Arcadis ONG to present this information to the Office of School Construction. So your vote is given permission to Arcadis ONG to bring this information to the school construction, the state school construction. The cost estimate that they're going to be presenting is around $1,527,000. So that's the cost estimate that they are going to be, once again, presenting. And once they present this and the state reviews all the paperwork, then the state will give then the green light to Arcadis ONG to move forward with the bidding process. But that's, those are the steps for this one particular area.
Just for the abatement and demolition?
Correct. Just, just for Phase III, abatement and demolition. That's, that's all that this is about, nothing else.
Which is obviously a precursor to actually building the education, the, the project that we approve, the education as we approve them.
So on a side note, I do have to say that I'm very pleased with the progress. I do, as a Hartford resident, go by Weaver mostly every week just to check. I've been inside the area just to check how things are moving along, and they are moving along. So we want to make sure that we continue expediting the process, right? So this is part of step, Phase III of the process.
So I know you said you had questions, and I think we, we probably need to amend this resolution to not have the sentence in there that the building committee has, that's, that's all, that's all I have. So when the time comes, I don't know how we procedurally want to do that, but.
All right, so we can check on that. We have a procedural question about amending the Hartford School Building Committee's approval first, since it didn't happen. Is that what we're doing?
It's, it's written into the way that, the way that we read the resolution, that the building committee has already approved this, which they haven't as according to, but there's no requirement that they approve it before us, but it's just written that way, so we probably want to read it differently.
And so while you're reviewing that, and I don't want to beat up on you, Jose, but I don't share the same optimism about the Weaver project, and so, um, first I'll say, the Hartford Building, the Hartford School Building Committee, that process, we want to, we want to try to figure out how to make that more cohesive, cohesive and efficient. But my question on, on, and I'll try to keep it on, on, on topic. I thought that this part, and I know you said we had a presentation on it, but, um, how is this project going to be done on time when the goalpost keeps moving? And I say that to mean that while we're looking at a million dollars in abatement and demo, I am hearing that there's a $6 million overage. And so I know that you can't speak to the overage part, but the demo part, how long is that going to take? And how does that affect what's actually going on now?
So, Mr. Chair, unfortunately, the project manager from Arcadis, and you couldn't be here today, they have two previews. I mean, they have, they're two different meetings tonight, so neither Jack Bocas or Sal Salafia couldn't be here. I will get back to you in writing with your question immediately, within 24 hours, just to make sure that you have the information, and I will email all the board members.
I'll give you three days, so don't, don't rush.
That's okay. I mean, we, we can assure, we can make it happen. It's just that they couldn't be here tonight, but by tomorrow morning, we should have an answer for you.
Okay. So then, like I said, at some point, I, I think we need to get, we need to delve deeper into this whole Weaver process, because I want to make sure that the project is on time, under budget, and meets the needs of the community. And I'm not confident that this project is on time and it's going to reflect what we wanted it to reflect. And I'm concerned about the overage, meaning the fields. I'm concerned about all those things, because those amenities are a part of schools and they're part of school yards, and so they're not optional. And I, I want the project manager, construction manager, and the rest of them to understand it's not optional.
Right.
So if they have to make cuts on their end, then make cuts on their end. But what we're not going to do is we're not going to sacrifice the amenities of the children to, we're just not going to do that. So again, I won't beat you up on that. I, I won't have any other questions other than the standing question, which is on the language. So, thank you.
Understood. So will the attorney?
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman and members of the board, superintendent. So the question was procedurally with regard to the resolution here. We would need a motion to amend and strike the language regarding the School Building Committee. And you can do that via a, a simple majority vote.
So make a motion.
So what we'll do is this. We have to go into executive session, so if you, no, that's too much. Okay, yeah, no, that's too much.
Make a motion to.
Yeah. So is there a motion?
Strike the language.
Is there a motion to amend the language on the?
To strike.
I know, I'm trying to do it like.
So you just want to make a motion?
No, I'm, I'm trying to make the motion, but I'm having a conversation at the same time. So is there a motion to amend the language on the second item, the approval of school construction, the Weaver High School? And the language is, now, take your paper. Thank you. The language is the Hartford Board of Educate, the language for, um, the language that we want to amend is the Hartford Board of Edu-, uh, the Hartford School Building Committee, what is it, accepted and approved? Hartford Building Committee, work through Arcadis and project manager have reviewed and, and approved construction packages for the below-list activities, which will enhance, excuse me, advance the construction project being performed by the following school, at the following school. So we want to amend that paragraph, correct?
And just in the paragraph above, it currently reads the State Department of Administrative Services Office of School Construction Grants OSCG requires that school building committees, you want to strike that school building committees, or school building committees, excuse me, and it should say that boards of education.
I have a question. I have a question. What is the purpose of the school building committee?
Can we do?
No, and I don't mean to, to sort of like throw that curve ball at you, but.
So moved.
Second. That's why I love this group. That's why I love your group. So moved and seconded, it's been moved and seconded, and we are going to include that language that the, that the attorney just.
You're going to strike?
I'm going to ready to read it right now.
Correct.
No worries. Yep. But we're going to strike the requires the school building committee to certify and approve the final construction documents, construction projects prior to the OSCG review of the plans. And then we're going to strike the third para-, or the second paragraph, correct?
Yes.
You're going to just strike school building committees and in the second paragraph, and then you're going to strike the third paragraph that you read earlier?
Yes.
So we moved it and seconded it, all in favor.
You know what? This is what we're going to do. We're going to move on to consent, and we will take this item up after we get out of executive session, so we can deliberate on that, because as we're doing this, court counsel has, has hands over his face, and I'm not going to make a move. I am not going to make a mistake, so we are going to do it that way.
So if we have, so if we have questions around this, we should wait until?
Yes, yes. So let's just do it that way, so it's nice and neat. So what we're going to do is we're going to table item number two for now, move on to consent, go to executive session, come back, and then we'll pick up item number two again.
Is there a motion to table?
So is there a motion to table?
When, when, if there's a motion on the table, do we need to?
Yes, we do. We need to strike the, the motion. See, this is complicated. So is there a motion to remove the prior motion?
Withdraw.
Or to withdraw the prior motion? Is there a motion for that?
Still moved.
Still moved, is there a second?
Second.
Is it moved and seconded? So what we've done now is we're removing, withdrawing the original motion to change the language, is what we're doing. We've done that.
All in favor.
All in favor. I'm sorry. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. So we did that. So now we're going to just table, is there a motion to table item number?
Still moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you so much. So we're going to table item number two, we're going to move on to consent. Is there a motion to take the consent? Well, it's not, it's, there's only one. Is there a motion to pass the consent agenda? Or to take the consent agenda as one motion, as one item?
Still moved.
Still moved, there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor of taking the consent agenda of this one item? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so we're going to take the consent agenda as one item. I know it's only one thing, but I got to get used to this, because normally this is our process, so I'm just going to continue to do it. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Still moved, there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as one item?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye? All opposed? We've, motion carries, the consent agenda has passed. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and we're going to take Attorney Wild, we're going to take, um, our assistant superintendent, um, Montos, and we're going to take, we just, yeah, we took court counsel. Oh, Howard, I forget Howard, excuse me, and court counsel.
All in favor of the motion?
And John, yeah, there's John, and John Griffin. Yes, I do.
Don't you, you moved to executive session and you approved the motion?
Yeah, I was just, no, we, we got a vote on it, because I'm just going through it right now. Wait one second. So we're taking court counsel, Julie Wild, Mr. Montos, and Mr. Griffin to executive session. All in favor?
Correct.
What, and Jose? Okay, no, no, we, we're, we're fine, we're good.
Hello, I am your proud superintendent, Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez. I am leading the crucial process of reimagining and restructuring our school district. I need you, all of you, to be significant partners in our process. We are doing this imperative work to deliver on our commitment to ensure improved student outcomes and equitable access to resources for each and every one of our beautiful and capable students. When we have completed this process together, we will hold in our hands a stronger, more equitable school district designed to serve all students well, a plan built by the entire community that will benefit the entire community. We at Hartford Public Schools are coordinating the process, but you, the community, families, students, teachers, and all of our stakeholders are the voices and the minds that must inform this work. By sharing your thoughts, you will help to co-create our district model. Our work together, which takes place over the coming months in community meetings with families, partners, and schools, will culminate in the presentation of recommendations for district models for excellence, different ways in which the district can be reimagined while ensuring the health and viability of our neighborhoods and continuing to provide access to opportunities and services for our families and students. For news about meetings and ongoing updates on our process, please visit our district website at www.hartfordschools.org.
All right, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Still moved.
Still moved and seconded.
Second.
Still moved and seconded until we are officially out of executive session. And so what we want to do now is discuss item number two. There was a motion, a previous motion to remove language so we can pass the bill, and now there is another idea to table this motion, table this item to another, and have a special meeting. And so allow the building committee to vote and then bring it back to us for consideration again. So I wanted to have a conversation about that, so I guess we can debate that really fast before we decide what we're going to do.
Um, I have a question.
Ms. Taylor?
Are you moving that? Oh, sorry.
No, no, I'm not moving anything yet, I'm just having a debate.
Um, are there financial consequences to the postponement of this particular vote for this phase?
Are there financial repercussions to postponing this vote?
So we don't have the managers, the project managers here with us, right? So they're the ones who actually will let us know exactly the financial repercussions. However, they did, when they met with the School Choice and Facilities Committee, Sal Salafia was very clear that this have to happen in order for us to continue the process. So that's an answer that we can get, information that we can get as early as tomorrow morning. Hopefully, at tomorrow's meeting with the School Building Committee, then the School Building Committee will vote on this, and then this can then come back to the board for a special meeting.
So, but, but, I'm sorry, I have a question. So that there is no requirement that it be in that order, you said before?
What I said before, that there's no state statute that indicates or that supports that you have to go from School Building Committee into Board of Education.
So, and this is for Phase III, so it has no impact on the academic wing of the school, or does it? Like, I know that, you know, our DME is, you know, relying on the academic wing opening for the 2020 school year.
It has an impact on the fieldhouse.
Or for the, I'm sorry, for the 2019, 2020 school year. So this already is slated, the fieldhouse has already been behind the, the academic wing. Like, it, it's not on the same schedule?
It will not be on the same schedule. It will be approximately three to five months after we open Weaver.
But this could potentially further delay that?
If we do, if you decide to move into, if you decide to table the item tonight and let the School Building Committee vote, and then come back for a special meeting a week or two weeks, I don't see the, the bigger ripple effect on this. If we decide to move and wait for a month or so, then, yeah, I wouldn't recommend that.
Chair, Mr. Chair, do you see, as, I know you serve on the School Building Committee, and I know Ms. Oliver does too, is there some reason why the School Building Committee wouldn't be voting on this? wouldn't be voting on this?
I don't know. I know I was told that we could possibly suspend the rules, but I, given what happened the other day, I don't know. I don't know. Ms. Oliver, do you want to comment?
No, I really don't have anything else to add.
Okay. So...
I'm, I'm concerned about us, I don't want the Board of Ed to be the reason for, I mean, listen, we all know that there's a very interesting process, construct with the Building Committee and the Board, and, yeah, we're told that not every municipality does it like that, but this is how we do it, and it has its own set of maybe inefficiencies. Like, I don't know exactly what to call them, but I certainly just am concerned about, I don't want our, this Board of Ed to be a reason why this project is delayed another day, of Phase One and Two, Phase Three, any of it. So that, that's, that's my, my concern. That would be my concern with not just voting on this now, given that there's no requirement that it has to be in that order.
Okay. Actually, you share the same concern. On a small note, and you can just answer yes or no, is there Phase Four? There's no Phase Four, right?
There's six, there's six phases.
Six, six, okay, there's, so this is not, this is directly running into Phase Four, right?
Right.
Okay. So, all right, if we take it up, then let me just explain the language. It would, I would read the State Department of Administrative Services Office of School Construction Grants. Boards of Education certify that they approve the final construction documents for the school construction project prior to the OSCG review of the plans. Once the plans are reviewed and approved by the OSCG, the projects are allowed to go out to bid. The Hartford School Building Committee, no, excuse me, we take that, we're taking that out.
The Hartford School Building?
Oh, okay, I thought we were taking that. The Hartford School Building Committee, working through Arcadis ONG Program Management, will review and approve construction packages for the below listed activities, which will advance the construction project being performed at the following school, which is Weaver High. That would be the language, that we would approve.
I don't think so.
No. So the motion, Mr. Chair, the initial motion was to remove...
No, no, no. I'm saying if we, right, that's what, it would end up?
No.
No? Okay. What do you think?
So the initial motion was to remove the following. School building committees at the top, at the second paragraph, just those three words, and four words. Also, the third paragraph, at this time, all the way to at the following school. That was what was proposed to be removed.
Okay, so you're talking about eliminating that whole paragraph?
That's what, that's, all I'm explaining is that was the initial motion?
Yeah.
That was, that was put forward and then removed from consideration.
Okay. So she rewrote it. Is that what you, Ms. Brody, that's how you understood it?
Yes, that's how I understood it.
So, Mr. Chair, so we could just remove it, or potentially we could actually, instead of saying that they have reviewed, we could say that they will review?
Yeah, yeah.
Which is acknowledging that it still has to obviously go before the Building Committee, so...
Okay.
Oh, you, oh, I'm sorry, you were reading that?
Yes.
Sorry.
That's what I was, that's what I was proposing. So, let me ask you, while we're discussing this, I see no problem with changing to it will, predicting that the Building Committee will at some point get its act together and vote. So I have no problem doing that. And if that is going to satisfy the state in making sure that we continue to get this work done, then I have no problem doing that.
Okay.
All right, so... All right, so...
So Ju, I'm sorry, may I? So Julie, in terms of process, do we have to strike the initial language before we revise it, or can we just revise it?
Are you talking about the language that you discussed earlier, or the language that's proposed here?
The language that he just discussed. He, he just read revised language around paragraph, what's that, three?
Yeah.
And so I'm just wondering, like, do we need to, like, strike this language and then, like, propose a new revision, or can we just adopt a revision?
Strike it and just do it.
It's a process question, like, how does he make a revision to this document?
So, well, so, and there's, sorry, there's two parts to that. If you're talking about changing the Hartford School Building Committee will, is that the language you're talking about? So first of all, you'll want to leave in that the State Department of Administrative Services requires that school building committees also consider. So that's just a, a point there. Procedurally, you can, you don't need to strike and then amend, you can amend.
Amend, okay.
If that's your question on the procedure. I'll leave it there.
Okay. All right. So, so, not yet, getting ready to make one right now. So what I'm going to do is, what we're going to do is, we're going to amend the motion, and we're going to amend the language, and then vote. And so what I'm going to do is read the amended language, then make the motion, all at once. Okay? All right. So I'm just going to read it again for the record. Approval of school construction plans and the EDO 42, submittable Weaver High School, Phase Three, the State Department of Administrative Services Office of School Construction, OSCG, requires that school building committees and Board of Education certify that they have approved the final construction documents for school construction projects prior to the OSCG review of the plans. Once the plans are reviewed and approved by the OSCG, the, excuse me, the projects are allowed to go to bid. The Hartford School Building Committee, working through Arcadis and ONG Program Management, will review and approve construction packages for the below listed activities, which will advance the construction project being performed at the following school, which is Weaver High, Weaver High School. Is there a motion to accept the new language?
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the item? We debated the hell out of it. Hearing none? Is there any, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Ayes carry? Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Can, can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Hernandez.
We just voted to amend it, do we still need to vote to pass it?
I thought we amended, we amended it?
No, you missed one.
I asked you that. Can I amend it and do it at the same time?
No, no.
No.
So we just voted to amend it, now we need to vote to pass it, or...
All right, just for the record, though, I did say that. This is for the record. All right, is there a motion to pass item number two?
As amended.
As amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been, all in favor of adjourned meeting?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it? Stay in the adjourn. Thank you, Wong.